Okay. Good evening and welcome to the Joint North Bend City Council, North Bend Urban Renewal Agency Work Session Agenda for Monday, January eighth, our first meeting of two thousand and twenty-four here. So, good evening and welcome, everybody. I'd like to call the meeting to order and ask our city recorder if we have any public comment this evening. We have no public comment?
Madam Mayor, per council rules, it will take roll call.
Okay, thank you very much for reminding me. We'll go ahead and start with roll call down here at this is with Councilor Jones. We're just for the record, making sure we know who's here in the chambers.
Because the video is your minutes.
Yes, present.
Okay.
Present.
Councilor Grublin.
Present.
Mayor Engleke.
Present.
Councilor Goll.
Here.
Councilor Schultz.
Present.
Councilor Noroff.
Here.
Okay. We need to also note any department heads in the room or okay, all right. Perfect. Next item on the work session agenda is number three. This is a discussion item brought forth by Councilor Nordoff. We have some information in our packet here on page one. I'd like to ask the council if they've read the documents here, there's a
Um, was there supposed to be public comment?
We asked if there was public comment, do you, are you able to hear okay?
Yes.
Okay, and there was no public comment.
I've heard the entire amount.
Okay, so all council have read the packet with the notes from Councilor Nordoff and then the response from our city administrator. Okay, is there any questions about that? The um, the documents here that you have been presented.
Appreciate the detail. You can follow up from the city administrator for lots of clarification on these.
Okay.
Mayor Engleke is my agenda item.
So I realize that you have brought the forward for your I I realize that you have brought that forward for your agenda item. And I do want to remind you a couple of things. Our um, work sessions are for items that are appropriate for our council goals. Okay, and so I want to remind you that it's for our council goals and for our council priorities. I also want to remind you that you are under investigation for causing a potentially causing a hostile work environment for our city administrator. You have been given a warning. You have been spoken to by the city attorney and myself that your action could be considered retaliatory. And so I have the document here that you wanted to discuss in the meeting. The mayor does have the ability to decide if this is part of the meeting or not. What I would ask you before you continue, is there anything new that is not included in your statement?
I would like to ask the city attorney if he is present with us today.
The city attorney is always a present during our meetings, yes.
Right. I have a question for the city attorney.
Okay, Mr. Wolf, I know that you're here with us during our meetings as always. And what I was saying to Councilor Nordoff, as you heard, as a reminder, that her behavior could be considered retaliatory. I think that's a very important point to make. And also what I'm looking for is, is there anything new besides just her reading these documents? But she does have a question for you. So, Councilor Nordoff, what is that question?
Yes, Mr. Wolf, I would like to ask you whether in it's within the city administrator's prerogative to place a dissent onto my work session agenda item. And I would like to quote from the council rules on dissents. And it is within the agendas and orders of business, actually, it's on the voting, page thirteen of the council rules. Any member of the council will have the right to express dissent from or to protest any action of the council by submitting a one-page written dissent to the city administrator within four business days of the council action. So Mr. Milliron's treatment of my agenda item, which he has termed as and put on the agenda as a dissent, I would maintain that he does not have the authority to add to my agenda item with his written comments, which were lengthy and detailed, that he does not have the authority to do that. I do not find that when we make up the agendas, it says on page eight of the council rules, it says preparation of agenda. The city administrator may change the agenda at any time prior to the start of the council meeting. It does not say that the city administrator may add onto a counselor's work session agenda item on his own. And placing items on work session or meeting agendas by counselors. Any council member may request that a matter be placed on a work session agenda for a brief discussion by the council. I maintain that if Mr. Milliron wished to have input to the council, he could have himself placed an item on the work session agenda like he did for the tiny home discussion and not lob onto mine in order to make his points, which were, like I said, very detailed and contained some some what I would consider to be false statements. So I think he should have gotten his own agenda item or just taken part in the council discussion after my presentation on the matter. And so I'm asking you, as you are the parliamentarian and the arbiter of the council rules, for your formal opinion on this.
I have no problem with the city administrator adding information to a to a agenda item. Even a city councilor placed work session agenda. I think that's square falls squarely within your city administrator's role. So I would suggest that if you have anything new to add to this agenda item that Mayor Engelke has asked, that would be the time. It's not the time to debate whether or not the city administrator has authority or not to provide the council with more information.
Well, let me
Thank you for your legal opinion, Mr. Wolf. Does the council have anything else to say? Or do we want to go ahead and move on from this agenda item? Thank you, Mr. Wolf. Does the council have anything to add to this? Counselor Jones's or Counselor Nordoff has spoke and do you have anything new to add or we can move on?
I just, I have a question. It seems like an appropriate time. We need to tackle this constant behavior of using up the time that we have in council as well as outside of council. When is the appropriate time to make an action for that? Do we have any actions?
Well, thank you for asking that. We do, when we go over the agenda later on, there is an agenda item that talks about some disruptive behavior and that probably would be very appropriate for that.
Thank you.
Okay. So if there's not anything new to add to this, then I will go ahead. I appreciate our legal opinion from our attorney and I'm going to go ahead and move on to item number four on the work session agenda, which is procedures for state revenue sharing. This is on page twenty-one of your packets. And I know you may remember that this is kind of a multiple step. There comes our finance director to walk us through what those multiple steps are. And see if I can get there to page twenty-one.
It's on the back.
It's on the very back.
Yeah.
All right. Hello, sir, how are you? Happy New Year.
Happy New Year to you too.
Yes.
Um, thank you for your time to engage in a discussion about the state revenue sharing and community grants. We're at that time of year when traditionally we have put our applications online or have taken them in paper form for consideration, but being as this is kind of a new year, we wanted to engage in a discussion on how you would like to go about that process this year. If you'd like to follow that same process or if you'd like to change that process in terms of how we evaluate each of the applications that we receive for community grants. And it could be a wide range of how we evaluate those. It could be interviews, it could be some sort of scoring system. We just wanted some input and a discussion from you on how you would like staff to proceed with looking at the community grant applications and go about that process this year. As a reminder, in this, in this year's budget, there was, I believe, eleven thousand, one hundred dollars allocated to community grants for these.
Not really a question, maybe a comment. It just seems like every year that it that it takes a long time to go through that. And it and it seems like it should be simple if we've got, you know, people that that really need the grants and 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 we acknowledge those, you know, let's move forward with it and, you know, last year we rattled a little money and and it paid off at the end. So I think we can maybe streamline that if you've got any suggestions that way. But seems like we go over that several times before it actually happens.
Well, and it it always feels that way too, because you go through the budget process where you earmark the money and then you accept the money. And then in the past, we've kind of, since I've been a counselor and then as mayor, sort of for a while, we were ruling over like, hey, you get ten thousand dollars. Let's just divide this between ten different nonprofits. But I I too like the way that we had put rat hole. Like that, you come up with the best ones, put some money aside. But also I was thinking about this. We've mentioned before that there are some, there are some things for North Bend that we would like to do. For example, there's the, whether it be the Main Street Program or the July Jubilee Festival, having some money go to that would be very appropriate. And then also, however, we do these applications and and we're not there yet. But if you have something like, let's just say, like the Knights of Columbus food baskets, okay? Our thousand dollars or fifteen hundred contribution is very meaningful to that small bucket of money that they raise. As opposed to say, giving the Boys and Girls Club a thousand dollars when they raised two hundred and fifty thousand dollars at a dinner. And I think that I don't want anybody to get me wrong. I think the Boys and Girls Club is very meaningful, but they have other avenues to raise larger funds. So although I think that some of these smaller nonprofit organizations are good, and I would like to find a way that we could streamline it as good. But help those, I think we need to be mindful that we have as a city, we have very limited funds. And we're given, you know, we could actually just take this whole eleven thousand, one hundred dollars and just keep it and do some other things. So I wonder if we can find a balance in between, and I don't know if our city finance director could help us do that.
I I I think that we can. I think that knowing kind of what your priorities are in terms of, like you just mentioned, like making a meaningful impact to an organization with a thousand dollar grant. Having that type of information would be helpful to know. And if we were to come up with some sort of like screening process or to to vet applications to like really get those that you're wanting to see in front of you that meet those those priorities.
Would there need to be a special, if we wanted to be have Main Street or the Visitor Center slash July Jubilee be recipients of that? Is there a separate step that like those? Like, how would we award money to ourselves?
Well, I guess it would have to be to a separate organization, I'm guessing.
Well, if I may interject, actually, I think if I'm understanding correctly, she's like, these are city funds that the city accepts and they do not come with stipulations that you have to gole it out. That that's your choice. That's that's your budgetary, financial fiduciary responsibility. So I think what the mayor is asking is, if she wanted to ask the council to use them for the July Jubilee or some other event, the appropriate way is that the council can budget accordingly or have the budget changed. That's up to, am I understanding your question correctly?
Yeah, I didn't know if it like, so where we're at with
It's in your budget already.
It's already in our budget to receive the funds.
Yes.
It is, and it is unrestricted money when it comes to it. So you can designate.
We try to help organizations, but we can, you know, print that back a little bit, so yeah.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That'll streamline that too, see?
Yeah, so we're not putting something out to turn in to give to us to give back to us.
Yeah. That would really make Councilor Goll mad.
So perhaps it would be helpful to maybe come up with a proposal then that maybe balances some of those items that might be for, you know, designated uses and then maybe what portion left might go towards.
Right, right, like, so where are we at in the timeframe like right now of this cycle?
Yeah, traditionally, like, this is the time of year when we start taking applications in for spring and then awarding those. What's that?
Actually, if I can step back.
Yeah, go ahead.
So normally we have already put out applications. And so this cycle, I went to staff and said, okay, this is kind of silly because I I heard feedback from some of the organizations that they would put in applications, we'd go through our whole budget process, we would adopt our budget, and then we would wait for money to come in. And then in like February, March, we'd start handing out checks. And so normally we actually would take applications well before we got to the budget committee, well before the July first budget, so that we could put in the budget. We did not do that. We have not put it, and so we've told any organization, and there's only been one organization so far that's contacted me because they asked about it, I said, well, early on. And so I told them it's going to be discussed tonight and staff's going to try to get some guidance. I will tell you that pre-COVID, you had a extensive application process. They would actually even have the organizations come in and actually make presentations. Through COVID, when I got here, I inherited a process that was a little bit more mainstream where the applications were pre-existing, went through the budget process. And then you then decided, okay, we have all these applications. But then sometimes you would add or delete or change someone up. We did that, for instance, like with Operation Rebuild, hope with some money. And so here you are, you have an opportunity as a fresh start. You're actually a fresh council, you have a fresh start, you can sort of kind of dictate what you want to do. Staff just wanted, I I just didn't feel like we as staff had clear direction because we sort of pulled back because we can put an application out on the street pretty quickly, but we just didn't want like eight months to go by.
Yeah.
Right, that's what I, that was my comment originally. It just seemed like it went on forever.
Let me ask, let me ask this. We are in a position right now where we are relaunching a citywide event that has really no money earmarked for it. And you're going to hear in my committee report tomorrow night that we have a list of people who have already committed to put some events on. Would the council consider, since this is sort of bringing this, you know, bringing back an event for this first year, say, let's try something this year? And since we haven't taken any applications yet, try this year to see what it looks like to relaunch the July Jubilee, what kind of interests us here, you know, how it is. We have that whole thing where we're going to come back and review it. And we invest in ourselves for this year. Talk about how we don't have money or funds to put something on and here's a bucket of money to do it. And then we can revisit how it went after that. Uh, because you know, it is again, you're bringing something back for the first time, so you need a little bit more money on marketing and maybe some events and things like that, that
Asking for the whole amount because I would say no.
Okay, well, so that that is my, that would be my question.
It would be there are, you just said there are certain like grant that depend on it, like the the baskets or again, like the bus ride. I know there's some people that want to get home to the bus rides. Like there are certain like things that that we have been doing annually that seem like it hasn't really had an impact. And I don't know if I'd want to not do that.
Okay, so that's from Counselor Schultz is, is that, does it, has anybody else have strong feelings one way or the other?
I agree, you have.
Okay.
Me too, yeah.
Something around, it's Counselor Nordoff?
Do you think we're going to have the national night out again? Because that's kind of dropped off the map for a year or two.
Um, I don't know. That would be something that the Special Events Committee could talk about when it comes to July Jubilee.
Okay.
Um, so is that, does that kind of help? Like, it sounds like I'm hearing from a consensus of the council that they still want to make sure that we do these small grants.
Yep.
Um, but there's, but also maybe that changes the way we have the form.
Yeah.
Right, because we're going to be looking at just some, you know, micro grants to
Yeah.
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 It helps a lot because we know now how much is in there. And so when we put out the applications, you know, we mainstreamed the application and tell them upfront, there's a maximum of whatever half is that's going to be awarded.
Yeah.
And so consider that in your ask. You know, because and and
Personally, I'm like, if we're going to do this five thousand to the committee, five thousand would be allocated to micro grants and eleven hundred bucks to be held.
I think that's a great idea.
I see, yeah.
What's the total?
Eleven hundred dollars in the rat hole.
Eleven.
Eleven hundred, so you have eleven, eleven hundred, hell, right? In the what?
He called it the rat hole away.
I uh, I told her something.
Yeah.
I don't know how possible this is, but I would love to see something that equates the amount they're asking versus the amount that they usually have in their budget that, for example.
Oh, on the application?
Yeah, so if we know we're, you know, one thousand of two hundred and thirty thousand and it it might not change your minds, but to me, it changes my calculus a little bit. I'd rather support the very local, which tend to be quite a bit smaller than that.
So on the actual application, what you're asking for and what's your operating budget for the year?
Yeah, and what you're, I don't know, if you can characterize it as a local or as a local only or it's, you know, a national organization. That stuff is really helpful for me to sort of it's not my answer, right? There's no one answer, just to figure it out.
Okay.
So so we'll try to revise the application to just be like one page.
Yeah.
And then also trying to get them to say, tell us exactly what you're going to do with this money. And then that way you can see, because you pretty much know most of these organizations. But this way you know exactly, and then you can discuss and once, and we'll try to, you know, turn this around, get the applications on the street, you know, do a thirty-day push and then get them for you.
Yep.
I do think it's a good idea to think of it as startup money though, too, because we, this isn't a guaranteed part of what you can use anyway. So if if there were an orientation on startup always costs more anyway.
Mm-hmm.
You know, that's kind of a interesting way to look at it. Thank you.
I think that's sufficient guidance for staff, so thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. That takes us on the agenda to number five, which is review the city council agenda for January ninth, two thousand and twenty-four. We've got that packet right in front of us, so we'll go ahead and tomorrow evening, we'll call the meeting to order. We'll take a look at the consent calendar. We have the minutes. Does any counselors have an item that they want to remove from the or pull aside from the consent calendar? This would be now the time to look at that or go over it or see if there's anything we want to have a standalone.
Madam Mayor, there was one additional appointment that came in. It's usually non-controversial because it's your appointment with council confirmation. So this would be a good time if you want to add that for the agenda tomorrow.
Yeah.
And name those out, so.
Okay, I did, thank you for that. I received another Special Events Committee application from Katie. And I'm going to spell her last name so that I don't, is it Parrot? P A R R O T T. Parrot? Row? So Katie has, I've looked at her application. So tomorrow night, I'm going to make the appointments just for the Special Events Committee people. So that would be Christie Urbly, Jordan Wicks and Katie Parrot. Those will be the three that I'm appointing tomorrow night.
Okay.
What about RJ?
I'm going to, I'm going to hold off on that and just appoint the Special Events Committee members.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah. So tomorrow night, when we we can accept the consent calendar as presented minus the one application or what's best
There won't be any, you're actually, we're modifying the agenda today now. And so it it is an agenda item for tomorrow, so there's no change to the consent agenda because we, staff can change the agenda up to the meeting with twenty-four hours notice, so we're good.
So you're going to remove RJ?
Yeah, we'll remove RJ Vinner and then we'll add this Katie Parrot or Parrot.
Yeah.
Yes.
It's Katie Parrot.
You can take care of that, Ms. City Recorder? Thank you.
Perfect. Sounds like there is no other issues with the consent calendar for tomorrow. So then we would have our public comments. And then on tomorrow night's agenda, number four is staff concerns regarding disruptive behavior at public meetings. And there is a packet of information in here on page twelve that, go here, that has some affidavits from some our department heads that were presented, that were present at a meeting.
Madam Mayor, if I had. So I think the council's aware that I was ill for this particular meeting. I was not present. However, that meeting occurred on December nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. The following day, the fire chief, who was the acting city administrator, had informed me about an incident that occurred at the council meeting. I will tell you that although I was sick and ill and at home, I did have my phone, so I was listening. I actually didn't watch the meeting, but but I did have one ear listening. The way that it was portrayed to me is that there was a violations of council rules. There supposedly was a pen thrown that hit the wall behind apparently the dais. I asked the acting city administrator to do what has been normal course is to simply just reach out, ask those that were present if they would submit an affidavit and have those sent to me. When I returned from being ill, I compiled those and put them in the packet. I provided them to the mayor, the council president and the city attorney ahead of doing so. And so at this point, staff has no authority over council's actions, nor nor would we violate that. So we're simply bringing this matter to the attention of the governing body, given that all staff were present and the department heads, most of whom submitted and that the counselor is under investigation for claims of a potential hostile work environment. And so we want to move this behavior to the council because only the council can address council behavior. So thank you.
All right, thank you. Um, so council, this is an item that is on the agenda for tomorrow night to take action if we see that there needs to be action taken. I wanted to have this discussion with you in the work session to talk about this behavior. And I'd like to hear from all of you because I think all of your voices are very important. I know these are, these are uncomfortable situations to talk about. And most likely, this is not why you ran for city council, is to sit here and deal with Is to sit here and deal with disruptive behavior in the council chambers, and it's unfortunate that we're here, and it's unfortunate that our staff and our department heads have to be um, objected to this, subjected to this. So um, I'd like to be able to have a thoughtful conversation, um, and to really hear from each and every one of you on your thoughts about this and what we should do next and how to move forward. Um, so I'm gonna work my way around. Um, and um.
Jenny wasn't here.
Um, yeah, I wasn't here for this. I mean, I'm happy to know, but I prefer the people who are actually attending meetings both first.
Okay.
Okay.
I'll start. Okay, we've all been with this temper tantrums and unselfish of the corner of the council in order of this show in the last few years. Most recently, at the council meeting in twelve eighteen, twelve nineteen, I've been presented by numerous witness statements provided for us this evening. I'm personally tired of observing and living through these types of behavior during our meetings or readings of our letters to the editor chastising all of us. There were the city administrator for saying she sees not being done their way. In one situation, she took legal action with the Oregon Ethics Committee against all the city councillors other than herself, which by the way, ethics committee found no basis for the violations claimed and we were all exonerated. The only thing the basis they accomplished was it generated additional legal fees to the city to answer the complaint. She's perfect, I guess, at least in her mind. We as a body initiated an investigation into her behavior during council meetings for violations of council rules, violations of oath of office, harassment and creating a hostile work environment for the staff and city manager. The original investigation should be completed and ready for our review in the next couple of weeks. When it's made public, we as a council need to take whatever action deemed necessary. I request this council request a second investigation investigation into her continued violation since the original investigation was requested. Everything that has transpired since first investigation began is not included in the investigation and warrants a second investigation. And everything that's happened since first investigation may be considered retaliatory against city administrator. Her continued behavior and violations greatly affect the operations and productivity of the council and city staff. And I'm gonna ask if the city attorney can provide the council some details of what the process for censure and possible ramifications thereof may be if the report substantiates the above accusations. I would also suggest the council take whatever prudent action necessary to bring civility and decorum back to this count, back to the council chambers and the ongoing operations in the city. Mister Wolf, do you have any comments about what the next procedures would be on censure and what that may look like?
Yeah, thank you, uh, councillor Garboden. Um, yeah, as you stated, an investigation was initiated. It's ongoing. From my understanding, it's nearing its completion, um, and the full council will have a, a report on that. Um, pursuant to your council rules, um, there are censure provisions available. Um, those include a verbal censure, uh, those include not being recognized by the chair to speak, losing all or a portion of your committee or commission assignments, and having official travel restricted. So pursuant to your rules, those are the the guidelines, so to speak, of what a a censure may look like. Um, again, we're uh, a little bit ahead of ourselves and i- in the sense that you don't have a a report at this point. Um, but but those are the options that would be available to the council, uh, pursuant to your council rules. Um, there would need to be a hearing and then a resolution adopting the censure. So that would be the the process that would be uh, aimed at the scope of the current investigation. Um, should the council want to, you know, initiate a second investigation or or uh, review additional issues, the the majority of the council could certainly go go and do that. Um, that would be, that would be the will of the council. Uh, at this point, I think that you're close to getting a report on the underlying investigation. And and would, and I believe you, Mr. Garboden, mentioned maybe holding off on an investigation into into this stuff until the report is uh, has been completed. So that is certainly an option. So that's the process for the censure. Happy to uh, answer some questions on that. Um, be beyond looking to a censure, there's, you know, depending on what the the role of the council is, you could look at adjusting or modifying your council rules to to uh, try to modi- modify the way that council meetings are run or the way that uh, councillors interact with staff and how much staff time. Uh, individual councillors can um, can take up of staff time. That's another consideration for the council.
Okay.
Okay.
I've also heard from uh, city councillors that, I mean, they're tired of the drama created by Nordoff and sometimes afraid of being hit by a flying pencil. And we're tired of the destruction caused by council, not at all, the inefficiencies of our meeting caused by her and or the cost the city has incurred in dealing with councillor Nordoff, whether it be increased legal fees, staff time, both direct and indirect. I urge you in the council to take whatever actions you determine legally and allow by the outcome of the investigation or investigations to take back our council meetings, make them a place of civility and productivity for the good of the city and the benefit.
Very good, Larry.
Thank you, council president Garboden. Um, all right, so we've heard from our council president. We've have some uh, a little bit of direction here on what the next steps would be from um, our city attorney. Um, I started to go down this way here. Um, councillor Hamilton, did you have anything that you'd wanna add to this or questions? Again, I think it's important that we do hear from everybody um, on, you know, the documents that we've received from the department heads to the actions that has transpired really since councillor Nordoff has been in office.
So since I've, since I've been here, I don't know how many hours we've wasted arguing about something that's a mute subject, something that's happened in the past, it's not changing now. And and it's been proven that whatever happened, happened legally and in our rights as a council and as a city took due, but we still keep arguing about it. And it, well, I don't understand where we're trying to go with that. There's no win, there's no loss, it's just waste of time. And I thought we were supposed to be going forward with all these ideas of the city and with what we're supposed to be doing as a city. When I'm going forward, we're sitting in one spot spinning our wheels, because we can't get past this hump. So I'd like to jump over the hump, whatever it takes, we get over the hump and keep going forward with what we wanna accomplish as a city and improve.
Okay. Um, councillor Jones, I know you mentioned that you you weren't here at the particular
Yeah.
meeting, but you've seen, you've seen the documents that were
Yeah.
not recently. I think it's also important to note on here when we look at this discussion item that there are budgeting and fiscal impacts um, which are ongoing, increasing legal costs borne by the taxpayers of North Bend, too. Um, so even though you weren't at that particular meeting, I think as a dis- the discussion as whole
Yeah.
is really important.
Yeah, I, I, so, so my experience, so today we've had, I don't know, almost all of the highest levels of staffers um, calls to take action against disruptive behavior. Um, and preserving a productive environment for staffers is the number one tool we have to accomplish our goals. And our number one goal is to find long-term sustainable funding for the city. Because our public safety budget alone was increased over two hundred thousand dollars, not because we hired a bunch of people or we bought a bunch of junk we didn't need, but because those costs raised that quickly and our tax increment was a hundred and forty-one thousand dollars. So we have to make that up. We have grant-funded positions for fire people. I mean, this is not sustainable, and we know this. But we waste council time with personal agendas, and we, that is not feasible. Um, I, as a person, I have a background in software, and I have rubbed elbows with billionaires and millionaires uh, in startups. Those businesses had the freedom of failing because the leadership was not conducive to teamwork. And I can guarantee you that most of those businesses failed absolutely for that reason, because leaders did not work together. Leaders did not work together. Um, when you lead with what is wrong with everybody in the room, whether it's accusations of criminal behavior or whether it's you're just dumb, this is not the way for the team to work together. It never works. We have constant reminders of businesses that fail at high levels. Billions of dollars are wasted because leaders at the top decide that their opinion is the most important. That's not how we work. We can't afford to work that way. So I really want us to take action on this. I wanna be called out when I take too long to speak. I wanna be called out when I make mistakes. I make mistakes. Everybody makes mistakes, but we are on the same team and the city can't go forward. And in fact, the more disputes, the more um, negative information or misinformation, truly. But the more negative perspective people can see, the less developers or the less people that wanna bring businesses, businesses to new places wanna look at us. That happens across the board. You have a business wants to do something, they have a hundred examples or a hundred places they could go, and they're looking for reasons to peel off those places to make it easy. Discord, particularly on old matters, particularly on things where you didn't get enough wherewithal to get a majority on the council, that, that's how it works. If you can't convince half of us to put your item on, to to agree with your course of action, it's done. That's how the body works. That's it. I don't, I don't like it when nobody likes my idea, but I have to let it go. It's, it's how the body works. We're not bosses. We're, we're a collective trying to give guidance for when our staffers who are deeply dedicated, every single one of them need to move forward on ideas. So, sorry, that was long.
Councillor calls.
Yeah, I'll go next. Uh, you know, we talk about budget restraints and everything else and and try, trying to keep track of um, legal time and and staff time that she has caused the citizens of North Bend. I'll, I'll take it one step farther. What happens if we get a lawsuit against us for a hostile work environment? That one is gonna hurt, and if that happens, the the, this is, all this stuff can be hard to explain. Uh, you know, it's pretty hard to explain this investigation. If if Perry Mason wouldn't have had a better investigator than he had, he'd only had one case if he'd have had the investigators that we've had. This should have, this shouldn't have taken however long this investigation's going. I I've got a, I've got a heartburn on how long that's taken. Uh, anyway, uh, I, I think it's gonna be, if I was a betting man, this investigation gonna be pretty ugly towards councillor Nordoff. And maybe the easy solution is to, the easy for everybody is for her to maybe resign. So, that's where I'm at.
Yeah. Councillor Schultz?
Um, I've been on a lot of committees as a teacher, and often we disagree. And I think that having seven of us, we will disagree, and we're not gonna agree with everything. Um, it's how we manage that disagreement and at what point we're done disagreeing or saying that we're, we underst- like, we, we don't want, we're annoyed that we're not correct, but we need to keep moving. And I do think that's the teamwork component. Um, sitting next to people who are yelling often is really frustrating. Um, and I don't think it's us being passive. I think it's us understanding where we're seeing, where we wanna go and some of us not agreeing. And so I think I'm passive. I think I'm learning, I'm working, and I wanna make sure that, that we're doing what's best for the city.
Thank you. Councillor Nordoff?
I appreciate everybody's candor. As long as I've ever heard Larry Garboden speak. Um, this, this started, this particular event, yes, or this circumstance. I was pretty upset because of, and it was pretty simple. It was, had to do with the order in which councillor comments were recorded. And I was asked first by the mayor to make the comment on that particular evening, and then it went out around the room. And councillor Jones uh, commented, made comments directed at me. But when it showed up in the draft minutes, it was councillor Jones first and councillor Nordoff last. Now, I looked back at our minutes and I found that, starting in May, the minutes, first, first I will say, the minutes for several years, at least the ones that are there on our website, the council comments jumped all over the map between different councillors. It was not in any particular order. Come May of this year, it suddenly became a a prescribed order, starting with councillor Jones and working its way down to me. But what I noticed was that when the council, councillors were asked for comments, it doesn't start with councillor Jones. And in that particular instance, it started with me. And my ask was to reflect the order in which the council comments were made. That's what got me mad, particularly because I said that I didn't have any comment, and then I receive a lecture from councillor Jones. And it looked like I had no response to it whatsoever, and that made me angry. Good, bad, or indifferent, it made me angry, and when I'm angry, my voice gets raised, and at this point, I did, I threw a pen. And is it something that you think about throwing a pen? No, it's not. I'm rather proud of myself for not swearing, and I'm saying that in jest. I would never swear at a council meeting, ever. So it was just an involuntary action from anger and frustration. I I think maybe even more frustration. So I'm willing to move on. I've learned not, not to um, put so much personal effort into, into this into putting things on the agenda. It's kinda not worth it. And, you know, the way the council power structure is, it's not worth it. And it's, I just feel that I disagreed enough with the work session agenda item from councillor Jones uh, back in December, that I felt that it deserved a response. And I will note that, no, I did not voluntarily resign from the twenty twenty-one water board committee. And I've spoken with Ivan Thomas, and I'm putting in a public records request to that effect. And no, I did not call the Confederated Tribes over ten times, which is stated there in the comments. No, I called and spoke with Courtney Krausman twice, and I left her a message once. And I've got a call into the tribes for her to respond. And what was the third one? Oh, yes, the October nineteenth, twenty nineteen, twenty nineteen or twenty twenty, Parks Budget Parks Committee meeting discussing the um, proposed disc golf at Ferry Road Park. There was a public comment, two public comments made uh, later, and they are.
Excuse me, Madam Mayor. We are rehashing her work session agenda item, and so I find this inappropriate. She's just actually made yet again, three inaccurate statements that uh, actually are corroborated and documented. Um, and the uh, dissent that I provided actually has documentation and or video and or audio and or affidavits to back it up. Those were not willy-nilly statements. Um, so I just wanted to uh, uh, remind the council that she is attempting to rehash her work session agenda item.
Yeah.
Um, and I find it um, highly inappropriate.
I was not allowed to present.
So, thank you. Um, so here's, here's, here's where we're at. Um, right now in your, in your comments, I mean, we're bringing up stuff from three to four years ago now. And, you know, councillor Nordoff, I really have always hoped that we could work collaboratively collaboratively and that you will follow your oath of office and follow the council rules, which seem to be very important to you. Because if there's ever a procedural error that any of us make, you constantly bring them up. And I have lists of errors that you have made and violations of your oath of office and the council rules. And some decorum in public. So. So we're at this point where I, I've been rooting for you, but we have spent so much time and money on training, back to, I think, the first couple weeks that you're in office, when you had made your first violation of the council rules. Uh, we had uh some training with our previous attorney. And I don't know really what else to do, um, except to constantly try to hold you accountable for these violations. Um, because we're not getting anywhere. If we are bringing up things from three years ago, we're clearly like, we're not being able to move forward. So what I heard from everybody tonight is the continued frustration um and concern of uh legal fees um that were costing the city money. Um, and, you know, there's even uh comments about potentially seeing if, if you would resign from your position to make sure that we uh protect our uh employee from a hostile work environment. So what I heard the city attorney say tonight is that there is um a path forward for a uh, it's another investigation um about your behavior um since the, your disruptive behavior um since the initial investigation. I think the reason why it's taking so long is because there's many, many documents and evidence to go through. So I think are those, the um people that are doing investigation are probably doing a very fine job that they just have a lot of material to cover. And um, as far as, you know, what is the action, what is the consensus of the action of our body here tonight? Um, it sounds like to our council president, you were saying we want, you want to look into a potential second investigation to see if there is a potential censure. Um, but we also know we have this other moving part of a uh wrapping up the first investigation. So, Mr. Wolf, is that something that we can um kind of circle back with you uh uh as this other investigation wraps up, that that could kind of be part two of that conversation?
I, I think so. I think what I heard is, is what uh potentially the consensus is to hang tight on formally initiating second investigation to look at a second censure and to wait to see what the first investigation report unveils. And then for the council to consider action at that time.
And I think that would be the most appropriate. Let's close the loop on the first investigation. But please note to the sta- our, our employer, city administrator, we hear you. You're right. We hear your concerns of retaliation. We hear the complaint or the, we hear the um, the words from the department heads and we are paying attention to that and we have concerns as well. But we want to close the loop on the first investigation and then we can move forward with making a decision if we want to look at an investigation to see if there is a potential censure for the most um recent behaviors.
Is there any way in the interim to protect the time of the staffers? You know, there.
Yeah. Um, so the question, Mr. Wolf, the question from Counselor Nordoff is, 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 they're sorry, and from Counselor Jones, is there anything in the interim that we could do? Um, so that our staff time isn't being monopolized by anything that isn't council priorities?
Yeah, so your, your council rules um currently having two hour limit for staff time for counselor requests. Well, that's rule two dot oh four dot one two zero.
Two hours a week?
So that, so that is not clear. I interpret that to be two hours per month. I'm not sure how that can be hours per week. That, that, that is a lot of staff time on a per week.
That'd be two days a week, yeah.
So one, you know, one option is to modify those council rules. The problem with that is it is uh an ordinance, which is gonna take, um, you know, you could potentially, well, you could, you'd have to modify the ordinance, which, which uh takes time. Uh, another option would be to, to encourage staff and your administrator to stick to that two hour time limit. So those are not, you know, necessarily great options, but, but those are, those are options.
If we were to modify the ordinance, what would be the timeline on that?
Well, we'd have to get it posted. Um. And, and of course, it's gonna be, it's gonna take thirty days for that ordinance to take effect, even if passed in a single meeting. So it's, it's gonna take time. So I, I, I'm not sure that that's necessarily a real effective mechanism and perhaps, you know, sticking to the two hours per month.
Okay, is that, let me, uh, I'm gonna ask our city administrator if that, if, if we really ask you as a council to be sure to uh adhere to the rule of not letting a, an, an individual counselor take up more than two hours of your time a month, is that, would that be an easy task for you to track? Would that be helpful?
So Madam Mayor, um realistically, um our interactions with this counselor has now exceeded three years. She's proven incapable of following the rules. I think as a staff, pending that investigation, I would ask the council to limit any interaction she has with any staff of the city. And uh we'll only hear from her at a council meeting. Um, and any requests that she has as staff, I think that she ought to bring to the council. You have the right wherewithal to suspend rules or deviate rules accordingly. Um, but I think that's appropriate action, especially in light of the counselor admitting that in a meeting she actually did throw a pen, which is a hostile act. Um, so uh her own admission, her own words. Um, and she is still dwelling on uh issues that in her mind, she believes occurred three years ago. I think when the investigation, the evidence comes out, and I will tell you that there is an excess of two hundred um items of evidence that have been presented in that to substantiate the claims, that I feel very comfortable in asking the council to take that unusual adverse action. And I would also consider um that you wait, read the investigation and then consider other actions. But for the time being, given the retaliatory um uh incidents that, that I've raised, um, I think that's appropriate action of the council.
So, Mr. Wolf, how would we go about um enforcing that rule of having the counselor communicate? The Counselor Nordoff is we're speaking of, um, because of the recent events and the investigation to limit her contact um to the staff and the city administrator during council meetings. Is there, what is the best way to do that?
Probably a motion tomorrow night.
Okay. Um, do you want to, um, do we want to come up with? You'll, you can help work, help provide me with that motion for tomorrow evening?
Yes, you bet.
Okay, is that coun- council? All right, I'm seeing a consensus from the group, then that is a, is a path forward. Correct. All right, um, so that was number four for tomorrow night's agenda. Staff concerns regarding disruptive behavior. There will be a suggested motion um that I will work with from the city attorney on that. And, and then we will hopefully move on. Number five on the agenda tomorrow night is the Welcome to North Bend sign. This is page twenty-one of our packet. Welcome to North Bend sign. Hey, this is on the boat, right?
Yeah. Hello, Madam Mary Schumpel. So I brought this before you. Um, in two thousand twenty-two, we brought this project before you to have a vote. And art signs was awarded to create the cabin, welcome to North Bend boat sign on the existing boat hole. I think I'm saying that correctly, boat hole. Um, we have one at the northern entrance and one at the southern entrance. This was installed last year on the southern entrance and we received such positive feedback. Everyone really loves the sign. And we felt um based on the response that we should look into doing a cabin on the north of the town on the boat hole. So we have um got a current quote from Art Signs, since this would be a replicate of what they did before. Uh, the price has gone up from two thousand twenty-two to um sixteen thousand eight hundred eighty-six dollars. Much like the first sign, uh, we are looking at splitting the cost between the T L T dollars and urban renewal dollars for this sign, if you wish to move forward.
Right. Sounds like a great use of uh the transient lodging tax and urban renewal dollars.
Need how they put that on. If that's the hillside, that's our yard down below it and they already put that thing on there.
Yes, he did a great job going out to the existing boat hole and taking the picture so we could visualize what it would look like. The only difference with this one versus the uh previous installed sign is that it's so close to the roadway, we'll have to have temporary road closure. So that would be the only addition as opposed to the first sign.
Okay.
So, any questions on that?
No. Um, then tomorrow night, we will have, uh, we won't have any executive sessions, so we don't have to worry about number six. Number seven is the city administrator's report. Number eight is the committee report. Um, I have, can I talk about some of the committee things now in the work session so that when we come to that tomorrow night, if we need to take any action? Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and do that now, because I had, um, I wanted to make a list. We had our um Counselor Hamilton and I had a special events committee meeting on Wednesday. So it was really after the packet, that's two pages right there. Came out, but I wanted to type up my notes because I wanted to make sure I had a list for you of some of the legwork that we are doing. Um, because our, our task at hand is to uh make some recommendations to the staff about some potential July Jubilee. I gave our city reporter one of these um already. I don't know if you want one here. You've got one, okay. So, um, so the idea was for the special events committee to start looking at what is already happening in the city and some, and who are the people who could really volunteer to put something on. Um, so we were able to, and so I started making a list here that I could then provide to staff that, um, you know, for example, the car show, the back alley, we know that's the date of the July uh um, uh twelve through the fourteenth is happening. And I'm, what I've been doing is as I compile the information and the contact person, then I can then hand that over to staff saying, these people are ready to go. If you want to do something with this, like here's, here, you just give them the green light or, you know, some of these are gonna happen already. I've reached out to the mall manager. They're really excited to be a partner um and do some sort of concurrent event at the mall. They really want to be part of the whole thing. And so that's Simon, Simon over there. So I listed his contact. Um, I uh have reached out to uh the airport to say, hey, we're doing this. Is there anything that you um would want to be part of? If, if you were, um, you know, something, and they are very interested in doing some sort of like static events. They don't know exactly what that looks like. Um, but Stephanie Kilmer is the contact person over there. So if we gave the green light um and the recommendations to the staff, I think there could be something special with the airport. Um, uh, we also have a um person in town that's pretty involved in the Main Street program. His name is Derek Ton. And I also work with him at the college and I had knowledge that he runs disc golf tournaments. And so I said, hey, is this something that you would want to do or would have the capability of putting on? And he says, yep, uh, it's pretty easy. He's put them on before. So he'd be very willing to put on a disc golf tournament at Ferry Road Park. And I will say, jumping down a little bit, I had then saw a posting that um the um the uh cleanup group in town, um, it's on the second page there, I think, Oregon's Bay Area Beautification had previously had said they wanted to do something in Ferry Road Park to clean up. Um, so we had a little bit of conversation and said, ooh, would you be flexible if, you know, I don't know, there could be a, a disc golf thing happening there and we don't know yet. And they were really open. They're like, we would love our cleanup, some sort of cleanup thing to be part of the July Jubilee. So that contact is Elizabeth and Chu. And it's kind of like, yes, and it doesn't have to be at Ferry Road, but we'd like to be part of North Bend somehow. We made um contact with the Liberty Theater. They are a go for um basically a revised uh um what's, what am I looking for? What's um at Liberty Theater um Opry? Yeah, kind of re- they're reinventing Opry a little bit. Um, and they, I've confirmed that they were going to do uh music that night. Um, and then um John um Bean, who is the theater director, I met with him. And, you know, a long-term vision would be, wouldn't it be cool if we had our own North Bend Shakespeare in the Park and that sort of thing? And that's probably a little bit too big to chew off something like that this year, because that gets involved in like making stages and things like that. But he was meeting with Liberty Theater and he's like, listen, um, I'm game to do some sort of theater that weekend. You know, a couple of different shows, it could launch, it could launch that weekend and be over a period of time. And there's ways to tie it into a downtown um festival where if there were things going on, he could even do pop-up scenes like at Grant Circle or things like that. So, you know, because we were, you were just trying to brainstorm. It's like, how do you, how do you get sort of like the celebration of the Liberty Theater, but kind of pull that outside a little bit? Um, so he's the contact person there. Basically, he's like, if you, I, I'm in for anything. So again, these are just lists of recommendations to, to the staff. It could be anything that they want, but um some ideas. Um, so they're open to possible uh pop-ups, pop-up scenes. Um, we did confirm even last year before this began that Margaritaville is happening. So there'll be a whole group of people visiting the Mill Casino. Um, they advertise pretty heavily, um, and they would love to do some sort of co-marketing for that. Um, and then um the, bringing back the North Bend versus Coos Bay softball game. Um, I reached out to um Joe Bullock Junior, because I knew he was very involved in the baseball scene and had said, would you consider helping put on a game like that? Um, and uh make it an event where it was a scholarship, uh like a free event with a suggested donation to um the Ian Spalding Scholarship Foundation, which is a young man who had drowned um in our community a few years ago. And he has said that uh there are no games currently scheduled at Clyde Allen Field. If that is something that um the July Jubilee Program wanted to move forward with and have a softball game on that Sunday, he's like, just let me know and I can plan it. Um, there is also other lists um on here. I reached out to um KDOC, who is now under BiCoastal Media, because I had learned from um uh, I learned, I can't remember where, that KDOC had used to be very um involved in the car show and the whole cruise. And so I had said, it, would you want to be involved somehow um through BiCoastal Media? And it was yes and. So Kristi Regal is the contact there. As I mentioned, Oregon Bay Area's cleanup would like to coordinate an opportunity for a cleanup or something tied in with the July Jubilee. Um, Sarah Wicks, who is our committee member, um, she has volunteered to be the advisor for the July Jubilee Program. When we were um talking with her at the Special Events Committee, she kind of went over like the timeline of how that had worked in the past. Um, and so that's gonna be one of our questions and why I want to kind of go over this a little bit tonight. Um, in more detail than tomorrow night's just report is, we would have a question about moving forward with the July Jubilee Program. There's this application process in the past. It would go out to the high schools. There would be a committee that would review the applications. And so our, my question really, I guess, for the attorney is that this is a committee, and if we needed a separate July Jubilee Princess Committee to review applications, do all of those members have to be on the Special Events Committee? And I might be getting too much in the weeds now on this, but there's gonna be, and it's that piece doesn't really take part until the springtime is usually like the, the, the timeline of like when they would meet and get the applications. And then they would go through the process and then the princesses were crowned like in usually like May or June. So there's some time there, but I'm like, we would have to think about what that would look like. And is that a separate subcommittee? And is it a subcommittee of this group or a new committee? Um, but she has offered that. And then just also on the list, I had Dick Wagner was the one who always did the historical walks. And he was just, I wanted to make sure he was still on the list. So like, this again is like our recommendations. It's not our job to tell the staff exactly what it is, but I wanted to have a list available of, you know, we know that we have voted to bring back the July Jubilee. We have people ready that could put together these events. And so then we would need to talk about like, well, what are the next steps then? How does, how does the Special Events Committee continue to act as an advisory group for July Jubilee? So, um, Mr. Wolf, can I, can I kind of go back to like the way the structure is set up with the Special Events Committee? And say you wanted to have a subcommittee that does this, selects these people that the July Jubilee Princesses are basically ambassadors for these events. Right? Is that, do we have the ability to set up a subcommittee? Right? Is that, do we have the ability to set up a subcommittee and do those people have to? Already actually be on the nine-member-appointed committee, or could they also be committee members at large?
I think you could probably do it a number of ways, I mean, you could probably just have the council create some other committee that's the. That is, that is tasked with. With uh, processing applications and bringing back recommendations. You could potentially have a subcommittee of those on the Special Events Committee. But then they'd be recommending to the Special Events Committee who would then be recommending to the city council.
And maybe I can lean on um, councillor Gall and Garbo, who were around during the time, but. If there was a separate group that was looking at these applications. That group could also then be, if, if the, if the, if. If there was a recommendation to bring back those other awards like Citizen of the Year, Family of the Year and all that. That separate committee could be, um, also review those applications. I got a little history, um, from Ms. Wicks on the committee and she was saying that was kind of Mayor Wetherall would just decide. And I thought, well, I, I'd like, that's, I like, I, I see where he's going with that, he would go down, he would talk to like, there'd be like a Business of the Year and there'd be the Family of the Year. But I think there's also something to be said about having kind of a selection committee. Where you have, you know, everything from a teacher to a business owner to a community member, maybe a couple of the councillors on that, but have a, a committee decide. So I just didn't know where we were at with like, subcommittees of a council committee and how that could be. And maybe I'm just kind of getting a two ahead of myself now, but I also know how quickly the months roll by.
Also, well, so what I was thinking about was, what is the burden on staff? You know, there will be some, right? So staff will be expected to make and distribute the application, compile. I don't know what public reading rules, so that is the question, is there a way to make the subcommittee and the committee independent? Yeah. Is there a way to make it?
I, I, you know, I think, yeah, I, I think that you, I think you've got a good idea there, but I, I do think. Possibly. And like, well, for one, you're gonna have to get your committee there to figure out if we are taking it the whole distance. Or are we taking it to Citizen of the Year, or are we taking it to Business of the Year? Uh, I'd love to see that, but the, that's more elements than, than what we thought of when we just tried to bring. You know, July Jubilee back, so we need to. Yeah. And if we do, you know, I, I'd almost love to see that happen next year or something.
Not do the award.
Yeah, I, I think, I love that Citizen of the Year thing, that was so cool. Uh, but I think, I think we've got our, our plate full just to do this and do this right for the first year. That's what I would suggest, I, I'd love to see that in the future. Yeah, and.
Resurrecting is gonna take a lot of work.
But I think you're on the right track, you know, you keep talking about staff time, but I think, I think these people are gonna take this ball and run with it.
Yeah, that, that's what I thought, just looking at the list and looking at the names.
Yeah.
I will run this, I will run this.
But who has to coordinate calling them and figuring out if they're official and like if we have to do, right, like licenses or if we have to sign anything or? Well, that's where we, that's where we need some guidance on this because the job of the events committee is to make recommendations. Um, and I think we did put in there as acts of advisory. At what, you know, we, in the past, you would have, you had your visitor center person was kind of the person that would coordinate.
Yeah.
The July Jubilee. Um, are we making a recommendation as the council that it, that we? Like as the baton point? Right, right, what, and I guess maybe I can look to our city administrator for that, um, because it's. How, how could the events committee work with the staff to carry forward some of these recommendations?
Well, I think therein lies the, the, the issue is you, you're looking to the past for how things were done. Um, and um, you know, I'd love for the council to actually hear from Barbara Dunham and some of those that actually. Uh, were here doing this. Um. Uh, the city Coos Bay does not run events, and that's what I have, have elated to the staff. Um, you know, and, and, and had feedback from, from their concerns.
Well, we got events all the time.
Yeah. Um, yeah, and, and so those events that you see, um, and have seen are. Uh, very. I mean, I guess I didn't say, you know, um. So Stephanie is not full-time, okay? The first thing I want you to understand is she's not a full-time employee, she puts in on average. Thirty-five hours, give or take, and she's doing visitor information center, um, she's, she's. The city has a contract with Main Street, so we actually have a contract that says, you know, what, what, what we're doing with Main Street. And then she works with me on urban renewal, and so we are splitting that. The majority of what you see work-wise, other than the organization of what she's doing, Main Street, is coming from the businesses. Um, and so, um, the, the Coos Bay Merchants Association that runs some of the events. And or say the Rotary or the Lions Club or otherwise, um, they are literally organizing, running the events. And so, um. And is there facilitated uh, uh, things that have to occur? Yes, you know, we have to look at traffic plans. Uh, we have to look at uh, permitting, things of that, th- those are staff things. Um, are we equipped right now? Well, if the council says that we're gonna get into the true event business and, and assign. Then, then so be it and I'll work a budget and figure out where we're gonna cut and move things aside to accomplish that. Um, you know, you've mentioned, you know, five thousand dollars, well, five thousand dollars, you know, to a part-timer. You know, uh, in the, um. Visitor Center can pick up, you know, some hours, but I will tell you that even when we looked at outsourcing the visitor information center. Um, there was a limited number of hours that even they would do to an event. And I forget, you know, we'd have to go back and look at what that per-toes contract was. And so we're operating with a situation here that, you know, ever since um, the RV park was put into trust. We lost all that extra T L T money, and so we are running on a very finite. In fact, what you see, a lot of what we're doing is ARPA money that's running out, that was assigned for specific things. And specific events, so that we could actually get power, you know, at Grant Circle, so that we could actually. Um, um, uh, put, you know, chairs and tables in an event tent, so that other groups could step up and run some of these events. And that's where I really would like to get it, um, you know. I, I will do what I always do, I step up, you know, and so that's why you see me at everything, you know, I, I, I average about. You know, sixty to eighty hours, in fact. I think in the, uh, my first report of the year, um, um, I don't want you to shy from this, there was a reason why we did it. Uh, but, um, uh, I know how many hours I've worked in twenty twenty-three. Um, cuz the system allowed me, since they're forcing me to go in and put in my hours. You know, instead of just allowing it to be salaried, uh-huh, it, it's recording my hours, so I actually know how many hours. And so, um, I, I, I feel kind of elated that for the first time. You know, we've gotten the, 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 the ice skating rink working to where I actually have not had to be there. One single day to operate, whereas last year we were starting up, and so that's allowed me to try to move on to other things. Unfortunately, I, I, I am grossly behind because I worked late Thursday night. Late Friday night, I worked here Saturday and I worked here Sunday. And I think you all kind of knew what I was working on, and so until we can resolve that, I'm not even gonna get any free time. So, um, so the answer is, we'll work with you to find a mechanism, and if the council wants. You know, with, with the next proposed budget that we find, you know. Ways to cut or move things so that we get, you know, someone that's in the event business. Um, I think that, I have an email, I haven't forwarded it yet, but I think is the recommendation that, that I made to the mayor was. You know, you have a body out there that you've appointed, which is a Main Street body, they have a contract with the state. You, you approve the contract, and that if the uh, uh, council have a representative and go meet with. That body, I, I'm sure that you can start to, to, to build some synergy with. The merchants and the businesses and get a committee going.
Would that be the mech- mechanism you suggest then?
That's, that's, that's where I would start, I really would, I mean, um, Stephanie's here, she, she interacts and talks with the, um. And I think that you all recently had some discussion at a meeting, you're more than welcome to come up and, and relay some of that since I. I, I'm sorry, I did not get time to, to move on your email because I was dealing with legal stuff all day, so I apologize.
And, and you know, you'll note on this list, these were, these are independent things that other people are coming up. Of course, we hope that Main Street would do something that weekend, but that's not our job to tell you that. But it would, to me, you're going to have events tying in something to July Jubilee would make sense to do something like that.
Correct, so, um, me monthly, and I did discuss with the Main Street Board. About some upcoming events that you have been bringing forth, one of those bringing, being July Jubilee. And so, uh, our board president Steve and I wrote out an email showing our support to meet with the Historic Landmark Commission. And the Special Event Committee to look at what that looks like on our end and how we can contribute and make this happen. I know that our board is open to moving our sip and stroll in July up to the date that you pick for July Jubilee. But uh, at our next meeting, we welcome you to come in and discuss with us and present what your ideas are and see where we can, um. Effectively help and realistically with our time and our capacity.
So, and you know, remember, we as the council, we voted to move forward with July Jubilee.
Yep.
We vote, we voted to bring it back, but we also knew that there was no money. Now, it sounds like in the revenue sharing piece, that could be some seed money. And there also is a, what I could, if, if then I am allowed to go to that meeting again, cuz I know we have to be careful about. We're, you know, I'm not supposed to be directing staff, but if I am allowed to act in the capacity as a representative from the Special Events Committee. I can then bring an application for a three thousand dollar grant that is available through, um. Uh, the Oregon Adventure Coast, that it appears that we would be, um, a good candidate for these micro grants. Because it's, we're revitalizing, it's usually for new things or revitalization. So that's another piece where there could be some potential like seed money, and maybe that money then is to. Hire a part-time coordinator to, uh, to, to coordinate all of these things. If we don't have that under the visitor center capacity.
I don't, okay, I'm just, just from a practical aspect. We have, we have a list of events and we have li- list of names of people who are willing to organize. Um, to me, it seems like that's the sort of, the connection is what would be made. And, and to step back after that, at least for now, at least for this incarnation. Maybe someday when we have, we're flushed with money that we can choose to spend on these kind of things, it's different. But I don't think that, you know, the, the three thousand or the eight thousand potentially that we could put together. Is enough room for a person to be an events person, and I don't really think that's what we're supposed to do. Like, I, I think you made an incredible list that we can say, here, here are some people to coordinate with. Uh, you know, and that's great, we'll get more events, we'll get more events in a particular time period, and that is a great starter.
Well, the Main Street hasn't agreed to this at all, so.
Yeah, I know, yeah, yeah.
Do we have to say as, like, we would like, like the Special Events Committee, like chairperson to go, like, do we have to agree to have you go and talk to them? I think that's part of it, right? The council would then, it, like tomorrow night during the committee report, you could say. We're giving you the Special Events Committee authorization to work with it. Um, uh, Main Street manager, right, um, and, you know, if we can coordinate. And also maybe it is giving the Special Events Committee, cuz you. Authorization, cuz right now we're just making recommendations.
Yeah.
If we wanna give a little bit more authority to the Special Events Committee because there's lack of capacity with the staff to say, yeah. And go ahead and coordinate it and start helping organize it, we would, we have, we'll have nine people on the committee now. That is people that could actually do work.
That's what we do, that's why we're making this, uh, list of people that are talented. Uh, to take it and go, uh, yeah, I, yeah.
So.
We're, we're gonna have this.
Yeah.
Director fifteen minutes, and so, and, and this is a council comments, uh, uh, committee discussion. So we either need to like, push it to an agenda item for the next work session, or uh, move on for now.
Yeah.
I think we got direction and there's football game on it.
Okay, so, so tomorrow night during the committee reports, I will probably be, uh, then the appropriate way to do this is ask for authorization for. The uh, the Special Events Chair to then work with the Main Street Manager on.
Not the Main Street Man, it's board, the board, I, I'm very careful about that.
Okay, can the visitor center manager be there? Cuz I still think it's part of a visitor center arm.
So, so you are going to the Main Street Board.
Okay, and you don't want the visitor center to be a part of this at all?
So, so Stephanie is the Main Street Manager, so as staff she's there, but she gets direction from her board for Main Street. So her board has to decide.
They wanna help at all.
What, what they wanna do, so that's what I'm saying is, the board has to go to the board.
Okay, so the, the Special Events Chair will make that recommendations to me and do that under committee reports tomorrow night? Be an acting item?
It would just be for you to go and present your items to the board.
Okay.
A- a- and I don't think that even you'd like, I, I think you have enough consensus.
You don't need to vote on it.
You just let me know and, and, and I text Steve and say you wanna, and, and it gets scheduled. Whenever the next board is and you go present and, and, and interact and talk with their board.
Okay.
Can I clarify something real quick? Anything visitor center related, since it's a part of the city, would be through the city administrator. For myself with that position, um, but any programs involving Main Street and what that brings to the table, that is to the board of directors for the Main Street Program. And then I report to them for that, so I hope that helps a little bit.
Yeah, I'm just figuring, I'm trying to figure out, I still feel like there's a visitor center component there, not just, but that's another meaning.
But see, I don't hear consensus from the governing body to take visitor center resources. And so they've got, that's why I said is they, the council has to decide what they want priority to use. Because you have the budgetary resources. I, I, I respond to the governing body. To move around resources, staff, things like that, there's no one, your city administrator is not drawing a line in the sand. I'm simply saying that there's finite resources, and so if the governing body says that, hey. You know, we, we want you to find a way, city administrator, to move money around, cut, do whatever, come back to us. It's like, it's like your adopted priorities, okay? When you look at priorities, again, you know. July Jubilee was way down here, so when we put together the budget, you know. There wasn't anything put in there for July Jubilee cuz we have all of these other council strategic goals that are higher priority. And so that's what I'm saying is that the governing body has to say, um, you know, and I'll still hold to. You know, w- w- we as staff, no matter what event goes on. Let's say that Mark Maticep puts in, he puts in a special event. Police reviews the plan, the fire department, public works, there's always staff no matter what event occurs. And then you see staff stepping up volunteering, and we're not in the event business, but we do it because we love the city and we like to see things happen. So, um.
So you're saying the visitor center person or right now fiscally and time-wise, there's nothing.
Well, there's a.
Cuz we've, we've not moved it up.
You only have like part-time resources over there.
Okay.
I mean. There's, there's not a ton of resources or money, I mean, we've lost a substantial amount of T L T. And so we know going into the next budget.
Yeah.
You know, we feel the whole gamut of that. So I, I'm just being cautious of, you know, tell us what you wanna do because we're trying to keep that operational within a hundred percent of the T L T. You know, when you see some of these things going, like the renovations and stuff, those are years of money that have been built up. You know, when you see some of these things going, like the renovations and stuff, those are years of money that have been built up. To do even that project. It, it's not one off.
Her marching orders would be just to go speak to the Main Street.
Board.
Board. Ideas, see what kind of. And if they aren't receptive, then we'll have to do something else. But I mean, if they're, I think it's a good idea for downtown. Maybe they want to take it up. I don't know. You won't know if they ask.
And there is the, you know, there, there is the Special Events Committee that keeps, we're adding more and more people. That could do some of this coordinating, but that hasn't been the task yet. The task has been just to make recommendations. So we'll see where it goes with the Main Street Board and then we'll circle back.
You know, maybe the, you know, the committee can be aware of things and, you know, bring, I'm willing to run X.
Yeah.
You know, if the Main Street organization knows that, then maybe the, you know, the, over time, there's a process developed. Where it's a streamlined process of like July Jubilee event stamp, you know, something like that. And that's the level and they, they have to conform to all the rules everyone else does. It's a big thing to get permitted, but it's all on them to run. But we have this kind of way to jointly grant, because I think that was one of your big things was to have the joint branding. So that things were connected. Um, and that's good enough. I mean, if we have a few events, if we have two events, if we have ten events, but they're added, but they don't create a burden on. The operations, that's.
And they're playing baseball. It's gonna be the coaches for the baseball game. Okay, all right, thank you. Can you contact me and let me know when your next meeting is?
Correct, yeah.
All right, um, that taken us then to the reviewing the Urban Renewal Agency Agenda for January ninth.
We don't have, we don't have other business.
Cause, uh, we reviewed the city council meeting, we'll have council comments and at this point, we don't have any other business for tomorrow at this point.
Oh, we're also on vacation.
Okay, all right. So, um, so then, so let's go ahead and take a look at the Urban Rural Agency Work Session Agenda for tomorrow. No? Yeah, here it is. Here it is. Here it is. So we've got call to order, public comments. Is there the approval of the U R A minutes? This would be the time that the U R A people would. I mean, that's us. That would be, have any, does any U R A members have any issues with the minutes? Cause then tomorrow night we would be able to just approve them. Um, and then, uh, Mr. City, no, our, or your, your A director, can you, um. Executive Director, can you talk to us a little bit about number four, which is the U R A resolution?
Um, so number four. Um, so a particular commissioner and also counselor has raised, um, uh, multiple to of questions. About, um, um, authority and delegated authorities. And so I mentioned at the last meeting, um, to sort of put this to bed and resolve this, that I would work. With the city attorney, I also worked with, um, an outside consultant, um, to put together. Um, agency bylaws. The city attorney, um, as well as staff have reviewed them, um, and we're putting them forth. Um, and so very much like you have council rules, um, these are your agency bylaws. And, um, it will, uh, expressly, expressively in writing, delegate the authority. That this body is already given and that we're already operating on, um, as your executive director.
Clarifying, yeah. Formalizing these. Any questions about the U R A bylaws, resolution six nine?
Um, so I, I thought that all of that stuff was already in, and so how does this help us?
How's this help you?
Yes.
Um, it puts to bed, um, this question that goes on over and over and over about the lease agreements, for instance.
Yeah.
And R F Ps and just all of these continual attacks on staff. That we supposedly have violated or broken the law or that we weren't given a staff direction, um, from the governing body. So it puts it to bed, it, um, um, makes it a resolution. We did it as a resolution so the U R A, um, can change it at any time that it so feels with the majority. And, um, it hopefully allows us to get past, um. What we've been dealing with, um, for weeks now.
Okay, any other questions?
Yes, I have a question. So, so if the U R A sells U R A property, is that to be brought to the board for approval? Or is that also to be left to the executive director?
Um, there is actually a state process for sale of property, so we'll follow state law.
Um, other items on the U R A budget is welcome to the North Bend sign. So this is just paying for the other half of that. There's the other bucket. Five was, oh, North Bend, Urban Renewal Consulting Scope of Work and Budgets. So this is on page nine.
So, um, a couple of things, also I mentioned in the last meeting that, um. Uh, basically we've, we've had a lot of, um, uh, communication that's really been disrupting, um, uh. Urban renewal and advancement of the direction of this body. And so, um, uh, uh, there is one member that has an opinion that is separate from, um, state law. And so we thought best to start a process with, uh, engaging, uh, Howard, uh, Elaine Howard. Um, she works extensively with Kuzbey. She's worked with them on their, um, uh, uh, Urban Renewal Agency. And expanding it. Um, so this will start with an initial training, um, to the council. Uh, which will also be very helpful to the general public of understanding why urban renewal agencies exist. What their powers are, what their authorities are, um, so that we're all on the same page. Um, uh, the second, um, we will be looking at our maximum indebtedness. Um, this is an agency that was started in nineteen ninety-four, the maximum indebtedness, um, and plan was reset in nineteen ninety-eight. I know that this governing body was told at one point that, for instance, the brewery, uh, um, uh, uh. Was not in the location of the U R A. Um, this is a city that paid a, a lot of money for a full-scale model. Which is out in the lobby. And so if you actually look very carefully, you'll notice that there's a lot of the plan. That still has to be implemented. Um, but right next to the brewery is the two-deck parking garage. That's right in your plan. So I don't know how the brewery can and cannot, but if you don't want to read the plan, go look at the model. Um, don't worry about the animals that have come from the hinterland and have taken over, uh, the, 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 the model. Uh-huh, for things that have not occurred in the city, but, um, uh, there's someone on staff that does that, who knows? But they just move them around from time to time. Um, and then more importantly, it's also then, um. Uh, urban renewal plans can change and ebbs and flows. And so, uh, this is a new body. You know, some of you were here nineteen ninety-four and then nineteen ninety-eight, but, you know, the world changes. And so this is an opportunity for the U R A, um, to, um, uh, potentially refocus some of its projects and its plans. Um, and then more importantly, um, uh, you'll get to a point that will then have to re-up the U R A. Um, uh, because it has roughly about one point five three million, give or take. A left of maximum indebtedness. The way U R As are supposed to work is when you got your maximum indebtedness. You were supposed to go out and spend that and get the projects moving. And then as the money came in, you were supposed to be paying it down. And so I, I want the consultant to come in and, and make sure that you're hearing from the foremost. One of the foremost experts in the state on U R As versus what say individuals may have learned. And so this is, um, a professional services engagement agreement. Um, and, um, we have professional services budget money in that account deliberately. And so this would be a request that you authorize, um, the engagement, um, and that we stay on the same page and we move forward.
Are we agreeing to phase one, phase two, and phase three? Or just agreeing to talk about what it would look like?
You need phase one, two, and three because if you wait until the one point five three million is gone, your U R A is gone. And all that, um, uh, your tax increment then would get reset.
Yeah.
And you can only imagine how many years it'll be before that tax increment ever gets up to the roughly eight or nine hundred thousand that you have coming in now.
Okay, thanks.
So, um, staff, um, is trying to get you all out ahead of that, um, and get you laser focused. Um, because at some point, um, we'll have to, um, address, uh, the, the plan, potentially tweak the plan. Um, and also look at the maximum indebtedness of resetting that, um, and making sure that, um, the voters are comfortable with, um. Uh, the projects, um, uh, moving forward.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So the training, I assume the training will include this, but so, um, before the resolution that we had specifically about our city code. We were operating on state law for the U R A. Yeah.
We're always, as you heard from your city attorney, no one from staff or this governing body broke any law.
Yes.
Despite what you may have heard, again, it's the opinion from a layperson who is not a lawyer. You've heard from someone that is certified by the Oregon Bar. You have done everything right.
Okay. So we then, the sign tomorrow night is just the, coming out of that bucket of money. You'll have an executive director's report and then that's it. So kind of going back into the regular council, um, or the work session agenda for tonight. There really wasn't anything left on the agenda. Is there?
Just adjournment. You can debate that for fifteen minutes if you want.
Who's, who's playing? Meeting adjourned.